The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a regularly scheduled public session of the Woodridge Board of Education and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. This meeting has been approved by a resolution adopted at the organization meeting held on January 2, 2024, and is in a revised resolution at the public session meeting held on January 22, 2024. Notification has been sent to the record. Notification has been posted to the Woodridge Borough Hall, Woodridge Memorial Library, tapinto.net, the Woodridge Board of Education website. Meetings of the board are open to the public and all members of the community shall feel free to participate. The board announces that under the longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. Before coming to the board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments made from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the board, but all comments will be considered. The board request that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about an employee of the board or any student. Please be advised that all or portion of this meeting is being livestreamed in real time and will be recorded for rebroadcasting at a future date.
Mr. Fallon?
Here.
Mr. Garvin?
Here.
Mrs. Milano?
Here.
Mr. Vaccaro, Mr. Biomonte, and Mr. Nieves. At this time, I have to announce that we do not have a quorum to hold a regular scheduled board meeting this evening, so tonight's agenda will just be a committee-only agenda. We will hear from the public, and we will have our presentations and our superintendent and my reports.
Thank you, sir. Onto presentation, recognitions and awards. We're going to start with the students in a month and teacher appreciation, Ms. Schmidt.
Oh, thanks. Okay, so this evening is extra special because we are honoring both our Teachers of the Year, another very special educator, as well as our May and June Students of the Month. So strap in, folks. I am going to start with our Doyle School Teacher of the Year, Dr. Ali Paskus. There she is. Come on up. Yeah, hear all the great things that we have to say about you. Nope, not yours. Last but not least. Dr. Paskus epitomizes an educator of the highest caliber. Her impact radiates across the classroom, athletic fields and courts, and throughout our entire district. As an exceptional kindergarten teacher with a dual certification in special education and a doctor in curriculum and instruction, Dr. Paskus captivates students with dynamic, tailored lessons that tap into their curiosity while addressing individual needs in her inclusive environment. Her instructional mastery, coupled with a contagious energy—I don't know where she gets it from—fully engages learners on their academic journey. This expertise earned her a highly effective rating and selection to serve on the school improvement panel this school year. Beyond her classroom contributions, Dr. Paskus demonstrates an unparalleled commitment to fostering students' holistic development through coaching, varsity volleyball and softball. Her leadership exemplifies integrity, ethical conduct, and professionalism in action. She further contributes to educational excellence through her roles of mentoring a student teacher this school year, serving on the South Bergen Jointure Commission Curriculum Committee that analyzes the new state standards, and boasting outstanding attendance. Dr. Paskus was selected by members of the school community as the Doyle Schools 2024 Bergen County Teacher of the Year. Due to this prestigious award—I'm sorry—this prestigious recognition underscores her unrivaled passion for enriching young lives through education. With a steadfast devotion to growth, Dr. Paskus truly personifies the qualities that fortify the teaching profession's noble calling. With her name now listed alongside many Doyle School greats or legends who also received this honor over previous school years, she wholeheartedly deserves this recognition, and I look forward to all that she accomplishes within the profession in years to come.
Dr. Paskus sounds wonderful. I wish I had her at the intermediate school, but I have another wonderful candidate I'd like to introduce you to. We have Ms. Michelle Palmyrie. Michelle, come on up. I do apologize, Michelle, after listening to that wonderful speech. I really should have broken out of the sorus when I wrote this, but I think it'll be okay. Michelle is a hardworking, dedicated, compassionate teacher. She is extraordinarily knowledgeable in the areas of the curriculum that pertains to her students and the necessary rigor that is involved. But as a teacher of special education, she is more so knowledgeable on how to best modify that curriculum to meet her students' needs and how to best differentiate it so that each and every student understands the lesson in his or her own way. She works continually with the child study team, parents, behaviorists, and administrators alike, to advocate for her students and serves her students not just academically—which she, of course, does well—but also socially and emotionally, continually providing support and guidance to her students. As a faculty member for the past eight years, joining our staff shortly after I joined WRS, she has been a steady, reliable, exceptional staff member, teacher, and colleague. She has consistently supported not only her students but other teachers as well, providing advice and guidance to some of our new staff members. One such staff member has informed me wholeheartedly that she has continuously gone above and beyond for her students as well as for our staff. She is a positive force in the classroom, a focal point for students for not just information or a particular skill, but for positivity and encouragement. It is for these reasons that I am pleased to recognize Mrs. Michelle Palmyrie as this year's Woodridge Intermediate School 2024 Teacher of the Year. I forgot your certificate. Wait, hold on one second. I lost my sight this year, I'm sorry. I can't see these. Where is this? There we go.
Bring the microphone down. All right. Good evening, everyone. For the Woodridge Junior Senior High School, our 2024 Teacher of the Year is actually one of our guidance counselors, Ms. Laura Panigawa. Please come up. A few things about Ms. Panigawa. She is our book club advisor, our National Junior Honor Society advisor, and she's a member of our Sunshine Club. Laura has been a guidance counselor in our district for 11 years, and I like to call her my right-hand woman. Transitioning this year into the role as principal, as you can imagine, was not easy. Without Laura by my side, I probably couldn't have done it. Laura literally goes above and beyond for our school. A few things just this year that she's implemented. A ninth-grade peer mentoring program, brand new, did this all by herself. We had all of our ninth-grade students come together once a month. We had senior peer mentors. We had a meeting. They did activities. Again, this is something new. Laura did completely by herself. She also—if you would like to take a walk around our building, you're going to see paintings everywhere. It is not from Picasso, it is from Laura. Again, last summer and on the weekends, Laura—not getting paid, on her own—comes in and paints the building again to boost the morale of the school. And again, if you look at some of these paintings, you're going to be like, are you sure she's not an art teacher? Because they are absolutely beautiful. She also this year implemented our first-ever Wellness Day. For those of you that are at the high school, this was something grade seven through 12. The last day before spring break, it was a half a day. Each student got to choose three different activities, whether it was making candles, it was playing a game called Snake, it was playing cards, playing board games, doing all different types of activities. From start to finish, Laura planned everything by herself. She's also our testing coordinator. She also did something brand new this year for Senior Commitment Day. Normally, the seniors would come together, we would just take a picture, everybody would just wear wherever they're going to school. True Laura fashion, made it extra special. We had a luncheon for the kids outside, we had huge banners, Mr. Softy came. She made it very special for the seniors this year. Laura's the type that she's up at 4:00 a.m. and thinks everybody else is up at 4:00 a.m., so when I wake up at 5:15, I have a text message from Laura at 4:00 a.m. "Hey, do you think we could implement this this year?" But this is what Laura is. Her mind is always working to better the school. And again, without Laura by my side, I don't think this year would have been as successful as it was. So that is why Ms. Panigawa is our 2024 Guidance Counselor of the Year for Woodridge Junior And I'm not done yet. Now for bittersweet news. We do have a retiree coming at the Woodridge Junior Senior High School as of June 21st. Ms. Lehman, will you please stand next to me? Tonight, we are celebrating the incredible career of Ms. Lehman, who is retiring after 19 years as a school librarian at Woodridge Junior Senior High School. Where do I begin with Ms. Lehman? She has been the ultimate bright light in our hallways these past 19 years. No matter how early the morning or tough the day, Ms. Lehman always arrived with a smile plastered across her face and a positivity that radiated brighter than the sun itself. She is the ultimate team player, working hand-in-hand with her colleagues to engage every student and make the library an inclusive space for all learners. Under Ms. Lehman's leadership, the library underwent incredible transformation that made even the modern realities of the internet, ebooks, and online research tools feel behind on the times. Who needs the Dewey Decimal System when you have the one and only Ms. Lehman? Additionally, she added a maker space for hands-on STEM learning to engage her 21st-century learners. Her career exploration instruction opens students' eyes to future possibilities, and her patience working with children of all abilities is something I admired from day one. Eileen, you will be missed both in the media center, as well in the hallways, faculty rooms, and the community. Thank you for your invaluable years of distinguished service. Now, don't forget to submit your substitute application. We will miss you. Now I'm done, for now. Sorry, forgot something.
Have to make this higher. I am pleased to present, at this time, the May Students of the Month for the Doyle School. I'm going to ask you to come up and stand next to me when you hear your name, and then I'll transition into the June Students of the Month. So since May encompassed many school-wide initiatives and activities around the theme of citizenship, grade-level teachers were asked to nominate a student on behalf of their respective grade that best embodies this important trait. The teachers wrote the following rationales for the students. In kindergarten, we have Arseni Greptsev. Is he here? Wow, buddy. Congrats, my friend, you look awesome. Arseni is a well-behaved little boy in the kindergarten class. He always comes in ready to learn and follows the rules. Arseni is a great role model for all kindergarten peers. He is a true pleasure to have in the kindergarten classroom, and he is quite ready for first grade. In grade one, Stella Sanzari. Stella is a responsible, enthusiastic, and caring student. There is nothing Stella would not do to help the greater good, whether it be in the classroom or outside of it. Stella is a shining example of a great attitude and model behavior for all citizens. Stella, you are so deserving of this reward. In grade two, Brandon Colbert. I don't see Brandon tonight. In grade three, Henry Thompson. I don't see Henry either, so we're going to take our picture and then we'll go to June, Okay, now on to June. For the month of June, students were selected for this prestigious honor based upon who best possesses the admirable quality of patience. That's a hard one, especially in June. Very brave. I'm so glad you made it up because I have wonderful things to say about him. Jackson's patience is particularly evident in his interactions with others who have special needs. He consistently shows kindness, understanding, and tolerance despite their differences and abilities. Jackson's calm and understanding demeanor in the classroom allows him to offer support without frustration, ensuring that his peers feel included and valued. His ability to wait patiently and offer a helping hand makes Jackson a shining example of kindness and compassion, earning him this well-deserved recognition. There's that smile. There's that smile. In grade one—I know he's here—Evan Rodriguez. Evan was nominated because he consistently demonstrates the virtue of patience through his thoughtful actions, particularly in how he escorts his friends and classmates to various locations within the school building. That face. Whether it's walking to Ms. Schmidt's office, to other classrooms, to the main office, or to the nurse's office, Evan waits patiently with his peers, ensuring no one feels rushed or left behind. He also advocates for his classmates' needs, especially when they have difficulty expressing themselves, always willing to speak up on their behalf. Evan's patient demeanor towards others has helped to create a supportive environment that fosters confidence and comfort among his fellow students, making him a deserving recipient of this recognition. Anika consistently demonstrates her patience in various ways, whether it is in the classroom, on the playground, or during group activities. She remains calm and composed even when faced with challenging tasks or situations, and she always takes the time to listen carefully to her teachers and classmates. Anika's ability to wait her turn, taking out a book to read while waiting for lessons to begin, and offering others to go before her in different things makes her a deserving recipient of this award. And last but not least, Olivia Lee, our third-grade Student of the Month. Olivia's exceptional patience shines through in her unwavering support for a new student who recently transferred to our school from another country. She takes the time to assist her new classmate with spelling words and ensuring their belongings are always prepared and organized. Olivia's patient and understanding nature has certainly helped ease the new student's transition, which we can imagine must be quite difficult, making them feel welcomed and valued in their new environment. Her dedication to helping others, especially those facing language barriers, illustrates why Olivia is an outstanding choice for this award.
Okay, we now have six, count them, six wonderful students coming out of the intermediate school that I wanted to introduce tonight. We're going to start off with our May students. Can I have up here—come on up here—Eva Nishander. Eva, are you here? Come on up, Eva. All right, Eva. Eva is respectful, kind, works hard, and always has a smile on her face. See? She is always attentive and cares about her learning. She is always willing to help others, both classmates and her teachers. Eva really enjoys school, she loves learning. Her favorite subject is English Language Arts. She loves reading, writing, and drawing, and will often do those things even during her free time. She also plays the piano, likes to travel with her family. She would like to be a doctor when she grows up, and we can tell already that she will be an amazing one. Eva looks up to her parents as her role models. She said that they are nice, fair, and understanding, and they're always there when she needs them. Congratulations to our fourth-grade Student of the Month for May, Ms. Eva Nishander. Okay, moving on to our fifth-grade Student of the Month, we have Ava Chet. I see her over there. Come on up, Ava. Nice job, Ava. Ava is a great student. She's a hard worker and an overall great kid. For me personally, I can say that whenever I see Ava, she has a smile on her face and is always super friendly. Her favorite subject is English Language Arts as well, you guys can talk about that, and she enjoys writing and being creative. When she gets older, she would like to be just like her mom, who works really hard but still makes time for her and her brother. In the future, she would like to be a videographer because she enjoys creating and editing videos. Congratulations to our fifth-grade Student of the Month, Ms. Ava Chetta. And then going over to our sixth-grade Student of the Month, we have Sebastian Pastor Rodriguez. All right, no Sebastian, that's okay. We're going to get a picture of our May students, and then we're going to move on to our June Okay, two for three. Let's see if we can go three for three with our June students. Coming out of the grade four, do we have Avon Klump? Avon, are you here? All right, we got him. Nice job, Ava. All right, Avon is responsible, always ready to learn in all his classes, and truly cares about his work. He wants to do well and does whatever he can to make sure that happens. He is just a great, well-rounded student who can be super silly at times and funny, but knows when it is time to pull it back. In school, Avon's favorite subject is science. He loves scientific topics and enjoys the content. Outside of school, he loves to play video games, even though his mom might say he loves it just a little too much. And he is excited to get involved in a soccer team soon. When he grows up, he dreams of being a marine biologist—or a paleontologist. Very cool. I'm informed that his teachers could have totally guessed that and have said that this career option was just made for him. His role model is his dad because he is always supportive. He really looks up to him. He says his father gives him advice and tips on how to go about solving problems, like when his little brother gets a little too annoying, among many other things. Congratulations to our fourth-grade Student of the Month for June, Mr. Avon Klump. Nice job. Okay, going over to the fifth grade is Camilla Nacasio here. Looks like we're going two for three again. All right. All right, we're going to jump up to our sixth grade is Melanie Perez here. Uh-oh, Avon. Looks like it's just you and me, buddy. Oh, you're up, you're up. Just us two. Thank you very much.
Hello again. Okay, for May, for the Woodridge Junior Senior High School, for seventh grade—I do not see her, but we'll still give her a hand—Alyssa D'Angelo. For the eighth grade, she is here, Michaela Pavlovic. Please come up, Michaela. Michaela is a respectful student who always tries her best. She works hard and always willing to help others. She volunteers to do work on the board and participates when she can. Her ability to balance her academic responsibilities with her athletic commitments—which she's a great soccer player—is truly commendable. We are so proud of you, Michaela. For ninth grade, I do not see him, Isaac Andrade. For 10th grade, I don't see him either, Max Rodzin. Not doing too well at the high school. For 11th grade, he's not here as well, Lovepreet Singh. For 12th grade, he is here, Anthony Wong. Please come up. Anthony is not only an exceptional student, but he's also kind and helpful to all students and staff. He has a true passion for learning and exploration and will always go above and beyond to help others achieve and want to learn as well. He is mature beyond his age and a role model for what younger students should strive for. I am also very happy to announce that he is our valedictorian for the class of 2024. Congratulations, Anthony. All right, on to June. For seventh grade, she is not here, we have Madeline Kreiser. For eighth grade, he is here, Nick Prado. Please come on up. Nick takes his studies very seriously. He's a class leader who is respectful towards teachers in every one class. He's usually upbeat and always greets teachers before and after class. He's responsible with his classwork, and he is one of the students that can be trusted with any important assignment. Many students don't do this, but he always makes sure to ask first if he is allowed to use his phone or a computer. Congratulations, Nick. I think we might be done here. For Eleventh Grade, we have Josh Bailey, who is not here. And for Twelfth Grade, Daniel Garcia. Congratulations, everyone.
Before moving on, first of all, Ms. Lehman, congratulations on your retirement. I hope you take some time for yourself, finally, and thank you for your years of service. Before we move on, I'm going to take a minute here and pause. Families, if you'd like to leave, we're just going to continue on with some regular business. We won't be offended, by all means. You can have a good night.
Student Safety Data System Report, Mr. Lisa.
We don't normally clap for that one, but... And it's a shame, there was all this positivity and I have to come out with this report, which is, it actually is good, though. We've seen some pretty good improvement from previous years. So, good evening, members of the Board. Today, I'll present to you the data recently submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education's Student Safety Data System. Under the Student Safety Data System, all incidents involving any type of suspension in school or out of school must be reported upon. In addition, any alleged and/or confirmed HIBs must be reported as well. During the first-half reporting period of the 2023-2024 school year, which runs from September 1st through December 31st, 2023, the number of incidents reported at the Student Safety Data System for the district was 32, which was disaggregated as follows. For the Doyle School, one incident of alleged HIV, which was unfounded. No other incidents reported at the Doyle School. For the Intermediate School, zero incidents reported. For the High School, 26 incidents reported as follows: two incidents of violence, two incidents of vandalism, one confirmed HIV incident, one alleged HIV incident, which was not founded, and 20 nonspecific incidents, which led to some form of suspension in school or out of school, which we are required to report upon. Nonspecific incidents typically consist of things such as vaping, internet violations, cellphone usage, class or detention cuts, etc., leading to suspension, thus must be reported upon. The total number of HIV incidents investigated within the district during the first half of the 2023-2024 school year was two, of which one was founded. These incidents were all investigated within the 10-day required timeframe. This does include the Student Safety Data System Report for Reporting Period One of the 2023-2024 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lisa. Moving on to our Board Administrators' Report.
Good evening, everyone. As my office prepares for the end of the year, I would like to say thank you to all the administrators and staff for their continued help with our new digital payroll timesheet system to ensure that it runs smoothly through the end of June and the end of our school year. I also had the opportunity to be at the Doyle School this afternoon, and would like to thank the staff for their help in packaging their rooms as we prepare to move 19 classrooms into storage for the beginning of our construction project. This by no means is a small task. Again, thank you to everyone at Doyle for their continued help. Regarding the Doyle Construction Project, the school has undergone a previous expansion project, and I'm confident that at the end of this new project, we will have a wonderful, up-to-date facility that we all can be proud of and will benefit the students and staff in their new learning environments. I would also like to thank the Borough of Woodridge for all their efforts that they're putting into the project at Doyle. If anyone has any questions regarding the construction project or anything that is going to happen with it, please feel free to contact me at my office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Superintendent's Report, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon. Good evening. I would like to share some good news this evening. Regarding our current 12th graders, the Senior Class of 2024, tomorrow evening, we will host our Senior Award Ceremony, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Lebansky Gymnasium in our high school. Thirty-seven seniors will be receiving awards tomorrow in the evening, in a total of $77,000 being awarded tomorrow night. The Class of 24 thus far from universities and colleges has been offered over $2 million in scholarships to date. Our high school schedule is as follows for the remainder of the school year. Full-day sessions tomorrow and Wednesday. Thursday, June 13th is a one-session day with a 12:13 PM dismissal. The high school is closed on Friday, June 14th. During the last week of school, the high school will conduct one-session days on Monday, June 17, and Tuesday, June 18. All Woodridge schools are closed on June 19th. The high school will resume their one-session day schedules on Thursday, June 20th, and on their last day of school, Friday, June 21st. The high school graduation is set for Friday, June 21st, beginning at 6:00 PM on Donna Ricker Memorial Field. The ceremony will take place indoors in the event of an inclement weather. The Woodridge Intermediate School will have its last full day of school tomorrow, June 11th, and then begin one-session days beginning June 12th through the last day of school on June 19th, uh, June 18th, I'm sorry. Dismissal for Woodridge Intermediate School on one-session days is 12:28 PM. The Woodridge Intermediate School's sixth graders will have their promotional exercises take place on Monday, June 17th, beginning at 6:00 PM on Donna Ricker Memorial Field. The rain date is Tuesday, June 18th. The Doyle School is currently operating on one-seven day schedules for the remainder of the school year through Tuesday, June 18th. Dismissal at Doyle School is 12:28 PM for one-session days. The Doyle School Grade Three Farewell Ceremony will take place on Tuesday, June 18th, beginning at 9:00 AM in the Doyle All-Purpose Room. I want to acknowledge our Woodridge High School Performing Arts Group, Mrs. Manala Kikis, Mrs. Durba, for the successful presentation of their annual spring concert last week, which we're still decorating for now. And I want to wish our Woodridge Intermediate School performers, under the direction of Mr. Saleem and Mr. Quatley, good luck in their performance in this auditorium on Wednesday evening. I wish to also thank Mr. Chris Lang, our physical education teacher at the Doyle School, and Mrs. Andrea Moreno, our physical education teacher at the Intermediate School, for their efforts in pulling off the annual field day events. I am delighted that the weather cooperated with us, and all of the events were extremely well-organized. Thank you to all of our parent volunteers, those who donated funds to support the efforts, and the Woodridge PTA for all of their help in coordinating the events. I wish to make the public aware that we had over 20 students from the high school, recently trained by the County Elections Department, to work in this past Tuesday's primary elections. These students are also eligible to work in future elections, and they are compensated by the county for their efforts. Mrs. Gina Afuso, our borough clerk, recently shared a lovely email with me and the high school administration with very generous sentiments being paid to our young poll workers. We were one of very few schools in the county who were selected to participate in this project, and we are most proud of our students' efforts in this regard. In closing, I want to wish everyone a long and delightful summer recess. Throughout the summer months, each district building will be able to receive phone calls and emails with any questions or concerns. It is recommended and requested that before visiting a school during the summer, that arrangements be made with the school principal and/or the administrative assistant to set up a visit. Thank you, Mr. Fallon.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. At this time, since we are not voting on anything on the agenda this evening, I would like to go ahead and open up the meeting to any questions that anyone might have about anything before we adjourn this evening. Hearing none, seeing none? Mr. Marley, is there anything online?
No, no questions.
Okay. No motion for adjournment because we don't have a quorum, so we are now in, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.